Things ramping down in your office or staying steady?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second.
Motion by Duitt, second by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Items four through eight constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one. Motion, item passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item four is approval of the minutes of the October 9, 2018 meeting. Item five is approval of claims. Item six, human resources, A, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. B, termination of the following policy, Woodbury County texting policy adopted by the Board of Supervisors July 6 of 2010. Item seven, approval of resolution for tax abatement for New Life in Christ Church. Item eight, received county recorder's report of fees collected.
I'll move the consent agenda.
I will second. Motion by Radig, second by Duitt to approve consent agenda. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Item nine, human resources, presentation of award certificate to Kyle Gates.
Melissa Thomas, human resources. I don't think Kyle's here today. It's just a nice award and to thank him for donating, I think, one gallon, three gallons of blood, and then he gets four hours of PTO time, so.
Good enough.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. Thank you.
Need a good nap after that, huh?
Item number 10, community economic development, approval of resolution approving and consenting to the Frontage Road urban renewal plan and Frontage Road urban renewal area for the city of Mobile.
Good evening, supervisors. David Glazer, Community and Economic Development Director. This item is asking the board to discuss and take action on a resolution that would provide the county's consent for establishment of an urban renewal plan and urban renewal area within two miles of the corporate limits of the city of Mobile. The Frontage Road urban renewal plan for the Frontage Road urban renewal area has been developed to help local officials promote economic development in the city of Mobile. The primary goal of the plan is to stimulate through public involvement and commitment, private investment, and new commercial and industrial development. In order to achieve this objective, the city of Mobile intends to undertake urban, to undertake urban renewal activities pursuant to the powers granted to them through the Iowa code. Section 403.174 of the code authorizes the formation of a city urban renewal area if it is within two miles of the corporate limits of the city, but does require the consent of the county. Because a portion of the Frontage Road urban renewal area is within two miles of Mobile's corporate limits, the city is requesting the county's consent via the proposed resolution. In your packet on page 15 in the Mobile, in the Frontage Road urban renewal plan, you can see that Mobile's corporate limits, their corporate boundaries are just north, just on the, like, they lie just north of Frontage Road. And it looks like from Fair Street over to, what is it, 31st Street there, Mayor? The intersection after Second Street. Is it 131 or 31? Highway 31. Mark puts the road there on the intersection of Highway 20 and Mobile.
140?
140.
140, okay, there we go, sorry.
So 140 and, between 140 and Fair Street, that portion of Frontage Road actually belongs to the county. And their plan is to include that in their urban renewal area, which requires the county's consent. I also know that the county engineer has an agenda item this evening to present the Board of Supervisors with a letter that would be sent to the City Development Board, to the City of Mobile's Development Board, proposing them to annex that portion of the road. So it is likely that the city will accept that. But I do have Mayor Jim Fisher here from the city of Mobile. He may be able to speak to what the level of interest is from the city to accept that portion of the road. One possible suggestion for the board would be to approve this resolution contingent upon the city's acceptance of annexing that portion of the road. You could motion to approve the resolution outright as it's proposed. The city of Mobile needs to establish this urban renewal area and certify debt for the urban renewal plan by December 1 of 2018 in order to freeze the base value of the properties within the urban renewal area dating back to January 1 of 2017. So what we're trying here to do is capitalize on the increment that was established from January 1 of 2017 as of today. Since then, we've, Mobile has had a new funeral home built, a new pharmacy, and a new coffee shop. There are some other plans for economic development activities, urban renewal activities that the city has planned and has been discussing in closed session. And so it's pretty important that they get this established by the December 1 deadline.
David, why is that, it's an 11-month period? January 1 to December 1?
Well, from the date that they, they submit the plan, it will go back one year.
So, but if they did it by January 1, it would go back, no?
They would lose that, it'd go back a year from that date, and they would lose those, those values.
Okay. I was just wondering, because you said January 1 to 2017 to December 1 to 2018. That looks like an 11-month period.
Go ahead, Dennis.
When they establish these increment districts, same thing with Sioux City and these other increment districts. When they establish them, they set the boundary lines, and it potentially sets the date a year back. January, so if they do it during 18, it goes back January 1, 17. The catch 22 is they have to certify some debt by December 1, or if they don't by December 1, then it goes to the next year, December 1, so then it'd be 1118.
Okay, gotcha.
So it's imperative they do get some kind of a debt established.
So it'd go back to, like, December of 2017, but you're wanting to not flip into a new year, right?
Exactly.
Okay, gotcha. I just got hung up, that's fine, man.
17, there's bare land. Now they put these buildings on, so it's imperative they get it back to 17. 18, yeah, probably.
So, and, you know, the city's in the process, and, you know, trying to provide some assistance with identifying what the value, what the increment that would be captured if it were established and set at that January 1, 2017 date to give the, the city some sense of the type of increment that they will be able to play, you know, that they'll have at their disposal.
I'll move the approval of the resolution.
Second.
Mayor, would you like to offer any comment?
Motion by Radig, second by Paudabum.
We're trying to go ahead and create a little bit of a tax base, we can go ahead and improve the, our frontage road. We have a lot of things going on, and the idea is to get bigger and better. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Wish you the best. Sir?
I've just got two quick things. I'm appreciative of you coming forward with this, and I think it shows a lot of proactivity on your council's part and your leadership. Are we wanting to move this without any contingency or hearing necessarily?
They're gonna, they're gonna take it. If you're Mobile, wouldn't you want your city all on your boundary? And wouldn't you want to create the district? I mean, there shouldn't be any contingency.
So no contingency on annexation of the Frontage Road or hearing from the county engineer? Okay.
I don't want any.
Would you like me to address that?
I, I think it'd be helpful before voting, rather than doing it after, but.
That's why what you're saying is that it would be contingent upon the council's.
Go.
This isn't a council voting matter. What we're doing is, we're writing a letter requesting that the City Development Board, a branch of the Iowa Department of Economic Development, make a correction to the boundary line for the city of Mobile and correct and give them, this would be the Economic Development Board, not the city of Mobile, giving them that right-of-way. They have no choice in this, according to 368 7A of the Code of Iowa. They're required to take a road that's a contiguous boundary to the town out to the center line. So what we're doing is we're requesting that the City Development Board correct the record of that last annexation of the city of Mobile and give them that road to the center line. So I don't think you need to make it contingent. I think the, the two of these dovetail. The board can support the urban renewal area and still give them their portion of that road as part of the city of Mobile.
Thank you.
So any improvements to this road would be on the city council?
It would be half and half, because we would still have the half between Highway 20 and the South City limits of the city. So we're still in from First Street to Fair Avenue for half of it. It's all within that urban renewal district where it would be eligible for TIF.
But aren't they annexing that half, that road?
No, they're only adding it to their urban renewal district. There's nothing I saw in that resolution about annexing the entire road. It would be nice if they did. I'd love to see that whole road.
They'd probably want it fixed first.
I think that's where the contingency comes in, where if the resolution that Mark is proposing under that code section, it is basically an administrative procedure, and it only allows going out to the center line. If the county were to want to require that the city take the whole road, the city would have to go through a separate annexation process to take the, basically the other half of the road that would be left over.
That's correct, yes.
And I don't believe that under the time constraint that we'll be able to get those, through those procedures by December 1, which is why I think the board could consent to it, you know. And it's the board's decision on what you want to do, but that's an idea, is that you could consent to it outright, or you consent to it contingent on the city's agreement to annex all of the road, not just as to the administrative procedure that Mark's presenting to the center line. Do you see what I'm saying? So there's, there's a couple of different options.
Personally, I don't, I wouldn't want to require them to do that. That's an issue they can bring back if they want to annex the whole thing, as far as I'm concerned.
I didn't realize these two were coming to a head today. This is something that we've been working on as a department to get this record corrected within Mobile. We're looking at all the communities to make sure that their annexations do go out to center line road. We haven't had this problem with Sioux City. All of theirs are okay. This is the one that jumped up that was only to the lot line, not out to the center line of the road. Again, the board is free to make any contingencies they wish, but the two issues are separate.
Yeah, they're not the same.
You know, if you want to make them take whole road, we, the road department would not mind. But all I'm trying to do is get them at least to take that portion that the state code requires that they have.
Dennis?
I guess I got one more question, because this involves finance a little bit. If they take the whole road, and this could be a question to Mark, they have to pay for, they want to put a new road in there. If they got the whole road, they're responsible. If half that road is ours, are we responsible for half that road? If it's a million dollar road, we got to come up with a half a million?
Half the payment.
That's why I think it should be required, they take the whole road, so we don't have any liability against us. Because that's potential.
But again, that's something we could decide later. If we didn't want to do it, we wouldn't do it. But my problem is, I'd like to get this done for them in time for the urban renewal. And if they want to come forward and annex the whole road at a later date, I'm fine with that, too.
Okay, let me give you another example. Western Creek. That started back, clear back when I think Dick Storm was here. The county agreed to spend $300,000 inside the city limits, but the city agreed to never TIF Western Creek. So we spent the $300,000, because if they wanted, if they were going to TIF it, we wanted to spend it. Because that would have been their responsibility. But I'm just giving a little heads up that if they own half the road, we own half, we could get stuck. That's why I think it's imperative they think they should have the whole road.
But if we own half of it, we'd have to approve any new road, too. Will you just say no?
You would have to have, we typically do a project, project agreement with the community when we're doing something that's through the town or adjacent to the town.
But again, we would have to approve that.
The board would have to approve that, yes, but, but again.
Just a heads up, though, maybe it could be going down the road, who knows?
It's likely that the request will be made, and then we'll have to deal with it at that point in time. I would much rather have them have all the way out to the center line of Highway 20.
Yeah, I bet you would.
The only correction, and, and one of the reasons for this, and I'll just jump on my soapbox for less than a minute, so I don't cut into your time, but the, the cities do not pay any local effort toward the road department and their property tax bill. So you, you'll always observe me guarding that money closely when it comes to spending secondary road money within a community, or even adjacent to a community, because it's paid for by the rural property taxpayers. We have over 1,340 miles of roads out there that all need improvement. It's very hard for me to go along with diverting money into a corp line project unless we can use some funding mechanism, like you did with Dogwood Trail, where you were able to bring urban renewal money in from the county perspective for that. And I know that one's a sore topic.
Yes, it is.
You take that same risk every time we look at a, at a city job. But it, it does give me concerns that I'll always relay and remind the board of. I don't feel I'd be doing my job if I did, because our county taxpayers, property taxpayers in rural areas are the ones who support the road department directly.
But again, this is for the urban renewal district.
The contingency could be worded in such a way that you could require the annexation, not necessarily prior to December, in a way that they could still do the urban renewal area with the understanding that the annexation would happen in the future on the appropriate timeline. I mean, if it was the desire of the board, it could be worded in a way, I think that would address.
Prior to the project.
Right, prior to project. It's some way that would allow the urban renewal to still go forward before December 1 and the annexation. I don't think it's an either/or here.
Yeah, well, you know, and so, sort of piggybacking off of that, if there was, I mean, debt needs to be certified by December 1, so hypothetically, that'd be a project.
What's certifying the debt?
And that could be an action.
Can't wire to any road construction project be specific?
That, that probably fit better.
You have to have a specific project you're going to debt to. And that debt could be general obligation bound, or it could be an internal loan, like Cretchenville did. When they put Streets in the Water out there on the west side or east side of Cretchenville, developed that, developed that development, they did an internal loan.
And it turned, yeah.
And that created debt, yeah.
Right.
So they could use.
Have to create a debt before December 1, or that frozen date moves, which is very critical in their case.
But they can't do that if we don't approve this resolution, one way or the other.
Correct.
Again, I think any one of those things, though, whether it's a road project or anything like that, we're going to have to work together and vote on that at that time, no matter what. So, I mean, we could even cross the bridge of giving them the other half or having, forcing annexation of the other half for them to do their project if we had to, in that scheme of things. Because they can't, I mean, I guess they could.
We have to consent to them doing our half of the road.
Absolutely.
That's right, so they can't do our half.
They can't, they can't force us to spend money on the road, and we can't force them. But what we can do is we'll be a good partner and approve this, and I think there doesn't need to be contingency, because there, anything else that we do requires us to vote on it anyway.
And Mark's right. I've heard about this, I pretend to sort of, I might step into his office, and he might have mentioned this, sort of, you know. But the idea is, I can't go ahead and say yes, approve with my council. But it can be.
So I guess I just, you know, my recommendation would be for the board to approve it. I mean, I guess I sort of look at it, there's, there would be, there would be actions required of the board to take these additional steps. But I just wanted to put all the options out there in front of you, so you, you can make the decision in terms of what you'd like to do. I know Mr. Butler has some reservation about.
Well, I'm more comfortable knowing that before anything happens with the other side of the road, that we got an approval, or we have to approve it, so.
It's our half. They can't just fix it and mill us.
Well, they can just fix it.
We'd let them do that, though.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Glazer, Mr. Fisher, or Mark, or Mr. Butler? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Item 11, secondary roads. A, consider approval of plans for project number U-51.
This project replaces a bridge that's been closed since 2014 due to failure of a substructure member. Project required some special design and extra permitting because it's in close proximity to a U.S. Department of Agriculture Conservation Wetland easement. We can't even set foot one inch into that easement, so we had to obtain special permitting from DNR and Corps of Engineers to meet the requirements of this bridge. It's going to be narrower than most of our bridges, it'll be 24 feet wide, but we have over 1,200 acres of land isolated on the west side of this bridge where there's no other access, so. It is a bridge we do need to replace. It's being replaced with local funding. Again, permitting's been secured, plans are completed, we recommended for letting October 30 of 2017, and requesting the board approve plans.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Young, second by Radig to approve plans for project number U-51. Further questions for Mr. Nara? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero.
We have a series of correcting resolutions. We did a resolution to close and vacate a portion of the county line road between Plymouth and Woodbury County just east of Highway 140. This would be north of Mobile. The closing and vacation, the legal descriptions were done by a surveyor on behalf of Plymouth County. When the right-of-way was plotted, we found a couple of errors in the line calls. So to make sure that we have a correct record, I'm recommending approval of a correcting resolution, Resolution 12 742, to correct the two legal descriptions that were in error. The road is already vacated. We've knocked out the old bridge. But again, this is to correct the record for future land, for future land transfers.
This is, this is that road up on what would be Woodbury 100?
It would be 100th Street, yes.
And 320th or something in Plymouth, I believe? 20th or 30th?
340th, I think.
Okay. Any further questions? I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by Duitt, second by Radig. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero.
This requires the signature both of the auditor and the board chair. The next one I have is for one of the two quitclaim deeds that share these legal descriptions. The first one is for the deed to Richard F. and Cheryl A. Kroch, and Scott and Sonia Kroch. I recommend approval of the corrected quitclaim deed.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Young to approve the quitclaim deed, transfer of ownership. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero.
And finally, we have the quitclaim deed for Gary Jansen. Again, correcting the legal description.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Any further questions for Mr. Nara? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. I think that goes with that one there.
Yep. Oh, no, maybe it's the second one. We ended up with, with the paths of Test and Signature.
I think, I think that goes there. That one's.
That's almost there.
All right. All right, thank you. Okay.
Just sign all of them.
That's Pat.
Dribble your name anywhere you see a line.
I can seal kind of line.
Well, we still have to have the resolution. The final item I have today is consider approval of a letter to the City Development Board in regard to the annexation of one half of Frontage Road, basically from the west right-of-way line of Fair Avenue to the point at which near First Avenue where the, where the street intersects the South City limits of the community.
I'll move it. Second. Motion by Radig, second by Taylor. Any other questions for Mr. Nara? Oh, Mr. Butler, sorry.
I guess I got two questions. Right now, it's Old County. Are we snope plowing it? Are we maintaining that road?
Yes. Yes, we are.
It goes half and half. When we snoop out, we give them half the bill. When we maintain the road, do we give them half the bill? This is what, you split a road in half, who's going to maintain the road? Who's going to snoop out? And who pays? Do we share the cost?
How do we do it everywhere else? How do we do it everywhere else?
We have various agreements with each of the communities when we have corporation-lined roads. Some of those are done by a formal maintenance agreement. Others, like Sioux City, because they're rapidly changing boundaries, are done, basically, we meet with their maintenance staff, and we figure out who's doing which road. In the case of Mobile, I would propose our next step, once the annexation is complete, is we would draft a maintenance agreement like we have for some of the other small towns. Danbury is one that I can think of. Hawkeye Drive on the east side of town is a one-half city, one-half county project. When we had maintenance work necessary to be done on that road, we worked with the mayor, we signed an agreement for a cost share to the, we took care of our lane, they took care of their lane on the improvements and upgrades that were done on that road. So it, it is an overly encumbering issue to take care of. It just typically requires a maintenance agreement between us and the town.
So the engineer will cross that bridge?
After, after we hear a.
It sounds like what we call share.
Yeah. You know, for instance, we did some patching out there last year. We had to pay the full boat, because right now it's our road. But now the portion that would be north of the center line, we would send the bill to the city. We would include their work in our contract, but we would then split that bill for that concrete patching at this time. We could not do that prior to this, however. Are there any other questions? I'll have one for you later.
The only, the only thing that threw me off is when he started by saying, we request the City Development Board annex, and then down below, it says the city annex, so.
What we're doing is, the City Development Board requires the city to annex.
Okay.
So, the, the two are correct in the way they're stated, we're petitioning the City Development Board to require that the city annex the road.
Yeah, because I saw in the next one, it said that the city didn't annex, that now they would, so.
Right. That, Chapter 368.7A specifically says that annexations and actions of those type that were done prior to Jan, July 1st of 1993, the county board of supervisors can request that it be corrected, which is the substance of this letter, is to request that the City Development Board make the correction in the proper corporate line for the city of Mowville. I recommend approval of the letter, I guess, if that's what I'm reading from.
I'll move approval.
I already moved it.
Oh, you did, sorry, thank you. Who did that, me and you?
I moved it, yeah.
Okay. Uh, any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero. Do you sneak a signature, Mark?
Yes.
Okay.
And just yours.
Is that the end of your deal, Mark?
Yes, it is.
All right. Item 12, Board of Supervisors, I am proposing that the county establish a date for first public reading of ATV slash UTV ordinance on secondary roads in Woodbury County. Forty-two counties in Iowa have an ordinance or resolution in place allowing ATVs, UTVs, and other off-road vehicles on secondary roads. At this time, there are four additional counties in the discussion phase of the same topic. Various requirements would need to be met, including age restrictions, registration of vehicle, liability insurance, drivers need to be licensed, and other requirements as well. Potentially, a small revenue stream would be returned to the county for registration fees. Unknown at this time how many vehicles would or could be registered, but I'm asking for, I will move a motion to proceed with public input readings, starting on October 30th, after proper notification and media.
I'll second it.
Motion by Duett, second by Raddig, to establish the first public reading for ATV, UTV usage on off-road, and other off-road vehicles on secondary roads. Are there any questions?
I, I just have one comment, and I'm not sure where I stand on this yet, because I'm still looking at the safety aspect of it, but I do want to have a public hearing, because I want to hear what the people out there feel. Because I, amazingly, I already got a bunch of phone calls about this, both ways. But I, so I, I'll support this resolution, because I want to hear from the people that live out there.
Okay.
And how it would be enforced.
The sheriff's office at the moment is neutral, to my understanding, if not leaning for it, so I will not speak for Sheriff Drew, but I did get a message from him.
Well, if, if we pass it, they have to enforce it.
Well, absolutely.
And I've been on the other side of a few resolutions that didn't make much sense to me.
Sure.
So, just process-wise, remind me, forgive my ignorance, but are we going to have the first reading of the three based on this language, or is that language, could that be subject to change from now?
I would.
Till then, does that question make sense?
Yes, I am proposing that we lead into it with basic language, and as, and as things need to be amended, or changed, or deleted, that those, those take place, and. I mean, from the information that I've gotten from, I don't, I did not count the counties other than a lot of them, there was 42 counties that have, that have an ATV, UTV usage, uh, of the 42, 36 are ordinances, six are resolutions. I would be interested in doing an ordinance, so it has, I would say, more teeth, if you will, but there are certain things that I won't, that I would not be willing to flex on, as far as age restrictions, licensed insurance, or I should say, registered insured, and other things like that.
What's the, I forget the process of when this would need to be, could we amend this three days before the October 30th, if, let's say that one of us said, you know what, this might be good to add in there, how far ahead of that public hearing do we know? If that's a Joshua question.
That sounds like a Joshua question for me.
Yeah, well, the inherent in the public meeting process is that if there's suggestions or changes, that those can be made along the way. If there is a mechanism where you can publish the exact ordinance that's going to be voted on, you can hold a public meeting, and then a second meeting finally adopt it, but if you're going to do all three of the readings, you can change the language along the way, so.
That's good enough for me.
Because the first reading could just be your public hearing, then if you wanted to make changes, you could make those before the second and third reading, correct?
Yeah, and, and each reading is essentially a public hearing.
Right.
And a chance for input and changes.
That was just, my guess would be that after the first public hearing, we may hear things we didn't think about.
Absolutely.
So Joshua, potentially, it could be changed three times over three public readings?
Correct.
And the third one would be the final, I mean, obviously. At our, at our last meeting, we discussed the board's desire to hear why Plymouth County rejected, and why other counties like us approved it. Was the engineer involved in this draft at all, or to what extent? Mr. Chair?
I asked, I had verbally talked to the county engineer many months ago on this very topic, he expressed his dislike for it altogether. I've heard many people from rural areas ask for it, wonder why we don't have it when other counties do. I promised to bring it up and, and see where it landed, so.
This is an ICE, Iowa County Engineers Association draft ordinance, so it would, it would be the same one I would present you if I were writing it for you.
Okay, thank you for having me.
If you were so inclined, you mean?
You know, Rocky's figures, I'm sure, right on the 42, the last survey I saw in, in June had 36, so this is something that's gaining momentum, there have been at least six more, it sounds like, since the county engineers did their last survey. The one thing I would like to see added, that I, I suggested to the chairman, was Washington County and three other counties have a provision for requiring permits, where there's a county sticker that goes on that ATV. That assures two things, number one, that they sign off that that will operate legally, they see the terms of the ordinance, and they have a sticker that would allow law enforcement to see whether or not they're a registered user when they're out on the roads. It would be a small revenue for, in the case of the Washington County ordinance, the money goes to the road department, and that would allow us to collect some money that could maybe offset any vandalism or problems that might occur from this operation. I didn't want to belabor any of the other points, but I did want to see if it might be possible to have that permit language considered. I can get copies to the rest of the board, if you like.
Yeah, we're not, that's fine, if you want to present those, I'm not.
I, I would just like to see the strongest ordinance possible that addresses as many safety issues, if you're going to do it, I like seeing licensed drivers, I like seeing liability insurance, I think we need to put as much of the onus of safe operation and education upon the operators of these things, because there are issues and concerns, and I think the ordinance, as it's written, does do a good job of pointing some of those things out, but we want to have some assurance that people aren't just running out there and running them up and down the roads, without being aware of the terms.
Well, and that's why I'm advocating for an age restriction on it, I'm not looking for kids to buzz out from wherever, just to drive around and joyride and whatnot, I, there's, and I've talked to the Union County Sheriff, who has had zero problems with it, he enjoys it, uses it himself, but there's, that's why I want to bring it up for public hearings, so we can get some input, and.
I was surprised when I mentioned it to some state patrol officers I know that have no objections, so, and those are usually the first guys out on the investigations.
I was, I was surprised, at least I can't recall this ever being brought up at a town hall meeting, can anyone else?
I did once, didn't I?
I did once?
Thought that it did.
I haven't personally been contacted on this, except by one against, and they were a rural resident on a gravel road, so a lot of the same safety concerns.
The ones that I had that called that were against it were similar, only they didn't own ATVs, wasn't that on your favor, but owned them.
Imagine that.
I did get one call from Plymouth County.
Say what?
Supportive, got a call from Plymouth County that was supportive, and wanted to know what we were doing right, and if we could guide Plymouth County's board, but that hasn't been.
Who is that?
We'll send you up there to talk to.
I've done enough of that.
Asking the wrong board.
I would say, I, I promised to reach out to Sack County, and I did, so I talked to their chairman, Rick Hack, who sits on the Rolling Hills Board, great guy, and they passed the resolution, which is what I think Rocky brought forward initially, and he said, two years ago, they haven't had issues, they haven't had a single accident, he pointed to the fact, and I believe this is the case, that there's a farm exemption.
True.
So he felt as a farmer that, you know, why should he have the right, you know, when others, others don't, and just generally, without getting too much into the weeds of the debate, I think if we put some parameters around it, I think, I'm kind of a personal responsibility guy, I don't think being out on a small motorcycle is maybe the safest thing out there, but I don't think we make it illegal, so that's kind of where I'm at, just generally speaking, but I want to respect the engineer's concerns, and make sure that we do it the right way, so that's kind of where I'm at, if anybody cares.
This is not a hill I want to die on, but, but I feel I would, I would be remiss in my responsibilities if I didn't make you aware of the issues from the studies that I turned over to you, they were from the U of I Emergency, College of Emergency Medicine, they were from the recreational vehicle, or the Off-Road Recreational Vehicle Association. I, I think, when you, when you do this, these are the things that made a difference, I think, in the Plymouth County Board's minds, but I would encourage you to talk to them rather than, than me, I didn't, I haven't looked at their minutes, or, or seen any coverage of their deliberations, so I can't say why they made that choice, I know their county engineer stance was similar to mine, and ours is all based around safety, it's not trying to keep people from having fun, but Woodbury County has had a fatality, and I shared that accident report with you folks, and it was, the individual was, according to the sheriff's deputy, about to do a donut, and appeared he lost control of the vehicle, and it ended up on top of him. This happens, you know.
Well, it happens on private property, too. You know, so, and I'm not trying to excuse the, it's, it's, everything's about safety.
I, I do like ordinance rather than resolution, because the ordinance has a fine structure built into it, and that was one thing I saw was very strong, and it was a serious fine in Sack County, I think it's up to a $625 fine.
I think it was.
For degradation of the roads, or for a miss?
Improper operation, wasn't it, Rocky?
Simple misdemeanor, violent.
Fine with that, I mean, if somebody's doing something that's jeopardizing themselves or somebody else, but.
The problem is, they're hard to catch, we had one in Delaware County that, we had some kids that were going out, and they were messing up one of our seeded embankments on a bridge project, we had a large cut slope, and up and down the slope, and cutting the ruts into it, I mean, this is one of the risks you take, we've got some big grading projects, big bridge projects, where, where we have had that kind of vandalism, and sheriff's deputies tried to catch them, and as soon as they go out into a cornfield, through a field entrance, and it's hard to pursue that in a squad car. But, you know, these, these are some of the worries, I guess you take the bitter with the sweet, you know, there's people that, there's people that would enjoy this, I understand that. Again, our concerns are damage to public property and safety issues.
Well, and that's another thing, is I'm, I see, I see side-by-sides ATVs go by my house often, and I'm, I'm not of the opinion that, well, if it's happening so much, we should just make it legal, that's, that's not my, that's not my MO here, I'm not worried about that, I won't, you know, if we can capture some tiny revenue stream, we can get some teeth in it, so that when the, when the deputy do, they might find an issue where someone is abusing it, then we've got some, got something to hang on to.
Well, this is why you guys are elected, and I'm appointed, so, I mean, you're, you're more responsive to what folks want out there, and that's, that's your job, we'll work with it, however you come out with this.
Appreciate that, Mark.
Yeah, again, I felt like we were missing my responsibilities if I didn't give you the full picture.
That's why you put teeth in the ordinance, so it doesn't come back to bite you.
That's right. Yours bites the operator.
Any other questions? Regarding the first public hearing for October 30th, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero. Karen, will you make sure that's on there, please? Reports on committee meetings, I will start, I was, you missed it, Marty, but there was at the last WCICC commission meeting, I think we have an exemplary IT department up there that we share with the city, Mr. Malloy, the director, has a wish list, it sounds like this comes up every year, but improvements, he's asking for a senior IT specialist, some of these are just a revamp of current positions, increase in title perhaps, and an increase in salary commensurate with that, senior IT specialist, an IT help desk supervisor, standby pay, which is kind of a sore subject on some things, a cybersecurity analyst, an inserter process improvement, DRAS, and archive social, just a rough mathematical number here, he's looking for around $200,000 on the, on the gross, so that would be half split between the city and the county, of course, he doesn't have any direct say on these, he's just kind of a wish list for him, the cybersecurity analyst would be strictly nothing but, at $113,000, for example, of some of the.
Hey, Mark.
Some of the comparable positions and pay grades and so forth, but as a board concern, I think we should probably at least entertain that we might be needing to do some different things, and ma, maintain our, maintain our department, the cybersecurity aspect that we already have, protect what we have, and, and so on. So that might be coming in the near future. Anybody else?
Sir?
Hey, Mr. Chair, so, this relates to Rolling Hills, and I understand that their CEO met with the school district and three Rolling Hills supervisors to explain the, the process for asking for core plus or non-core funding, and so apprising that applications are due by the end of October, and, and just want to make sure that it's explained clearly, because there's a lot of misinformation that's being spread. Rolling Hills, of course, will budget January to March of next year for July 1st, 2019 and beyond, but in order to be able to do that and do it properly, they have to understand the services that we have, and they have to be able to understand them. I think it's very good on their part that they are looking to have November and December, at least 60 days, to be able to understand our services, especially as House File 2456 mandates core services to include crisis and stabilization, so anything above that, they're going to need some time, and so with that, we all know that anybody that has reserves that are spent down, you can only spend what you can levy, and obviously, it's much higher And obviously, it's much higher there, as far as what can be spent, and what can be spent in our previous region. But core services are going to be the priority for every region going forward, and they're going to need to prioritize them, as every region will. But they need the time to be able to look at that. I say that because of the misinformation about these services will be terminated when they're simply trying to consider that. I don't think they deserve to be aligned, attacked, or misrepresented by a select few. So, that is my report on a committee meeting, and I am hopeful that they'll be able to have that discussion and be able to look at what they can fund and not.
Thank you.
I had a very good policy review committee meeting last week. Supervisor Raddick was unable to attend. But we discussed, of course, the texting policy that the board just rescinded because it was redundant. We're going through this, what I call, an old book of policies to clean up redundant language and language that needs to be updated, and it's getting smaller and smaller. We also discussed a freedom of information policy draft that P.J. Jennings is doing the heavy lifting on, which will relate to how the county responds to those requests, and just have something in writing as far as potential fees, time involved, and the duties assigned. The big topic was revising the disposition policy of the county. This was brought forward by Kenny Schmitz primarily to deal with basically a lot of junk that needs to be disposed of, in whatever way, and wondering how to go about that, because the county board still is the custodian of county property. And in a way that respects the county engineer, their particular larger value items they dispose of, and other areas of the county, the question was asked, how do we fairly dispose of, or donate, or directly sell, or transfer property, in a way that doesn't put all of the assignment upon the building services director, and in a way that doesn't have anything fall through the cracks, so the board's not aware of it. So, it's going to come back at the next meeting, but we settled on a very good process, which will involve roughly monthly agenda-type items for the board to consider, whether it's consent or otherwise, where the director of Building Services will compile a list and put items in different categories. So, you would not take separate actions for separate methods of disposal. You would have an overall agenda item the board would consider, which would include, if it's in his best judgment, to donate something, to dispose of it, to auction it off by a third party, rather than having the county do that, or sell it for a certain price to a county employee, former county employee, or a member of the public, in a way that's transparent and posts, so that the citizenry is aware of it and can make inquiry. And the hope is that there would be pictures for some of those items, if they're of enough value to be worth that. And then the board would approve that. If there are questions on certain items, it's easy enough for the board to say, "We approve this without these items. Let's bring this back next month and see if it makes sense to sell this item for 2,000, because, you know, Keith thinks it's worth three." Something like that, so.
I'd take all that items, have like Mark bring one of his trailers down there, and we'd just take it all down to State Steel, and it's gone. That's how I'd take care of it, so. You get any kind of money, you did good.
Yep. So, anyway, obviously, computers aren't the best to go through Kenny, so each department will be responsible for providing their wish list to dispose of, so to speak, to Kenny, and that would all funnel to the board. And this would be done in a way that allows, you know, so that we don't have a buildup in different county buildings of just junk, that it's in his best interest to get rid of, and obviously, our best interest if we're going to utilize the space. So, we can look forward to that after the next policy meeting, when that's fleshed out. But I think that was a very good meeting on that item. Supervisor Taylor and I also just had a historical committee meeting. So, we discussed again the certified local government issue, and we decided to recommend to the Courthouse Foundation the shifting of the leftover funds from the Centennial Event Fund, which is just over 11,000. So, that formality will be, will be done, and we'll be, still have the website up, obviously, and we're still looking for ways to facilitate tours.
So, if you know anybody that wants a tour, we've got a cohort cadre, an amalgamation of volunteers, willing to give one.
Any other synonyms?
Nope.
Okay.
Mr. Powerwell?
We'll just let the board know that next week, we start interviewing for the new director for our RTC. Steve Schoel is retiring from the Third Judicial District, the chair. Last I heard, I think he said he had four good applicants, and he's hoping to get a couple more. So, we'll be interviewing next Monday and next Friday candidates for that. And then, on a side note, I did just want to mention, last week, I had the opportunity to tour the Dubuque County courthouse, and had a spirited discussion with one of their supervisors, from his, how much older theirs was. I said, "Yeah, but ours is nicer," so. But they do have a beautiful courthouse in Dubuque.
Just not as.
Not as big. It's older than ours. And I was amazed, because they redid everything, but the gold dome was still the original. They didn't change that.
Is it kind of like arguing, who's got the cuter grandbaby, or something like that?
Yeah, pretty close.
Okay.
It was, I shouldn't have expected, it was an interesting discussion.
Okay.
We were both laughing and chuckling through it all, so. That's all I have.
Mr. Raddick?
You guys have grandbabies?
Not that I know of.
I have ten.
You wouldn't be a potabomb if you didn't have double digits, huh?
Yep. My oldest is at Morning Side College, and my youngest are four-month-old twins.
I had a bunch of CO meetings during the week. I guess, any questions on anything up there? It's mostly business as usual. Wicter tiff, you know, same problems. Not enough people in certain counties, too many in others. I guess we just had our CO update last week, so you probably got most of it there.
Okay. Round two of citizen concerns.
So, I had a citizen call me about Jake brakes on Highway 20, and then on the bypass over there. That is DOT area, but he would like signage on there, some kind of request not to use Jake brakes, especially at night, on those roads.
It is county rural area, so it's under the board's jurisdiction.
Okay.
I already have, I have the rewrite done. Looked already to you, Joshua.
I'm, it's on my desk.
Okay. There are seven areas in all that were proposed for addition. The seventy, the rural portions of the 20 and 75 bypass, and Highway 20 from Buchanan Avenue to the Highway 20 and 75 interchange are included. So, that should cover that concern area. I had, I've had a couple of calls from people who live in Buchanan and on 155th Street in that area.
Yeah.
That are affected by that rural place. It includes a section in Salix, it includes a section east of Sergeant Bluff, but now they're combined under a single ordinance that, as soon as we get the okay, we'll set a first hearing. We'd have to secure the signs, and then DOT usually puts them up.
Okay.
For those areas, for the engine brake ordinance enforcement.
Thank you.
That was all I had.
Okay. Board concerns. Mr. Gill, did we need to set a time on that public hearing ordinance, or just, is that something that needs to be?
When it's, yeah, time should be set. It doesn't matter when, but sometime during the meeting.
Do we need to reopen that, or just?
I can move to amend it, can't you?
4:40.
4:40? Thank you. Any other board concerns? We are adjourned. Well, we don't, we don't have a closed session.
Something with your eyes.
And he only does surgery.
Marty said something with his eyes. I have something tomorrow, so my worry is that people are going to think every week that we have a new glasses person, so. I don't, I've got this puffiness.